Okay, okay, it's moving now, can you call them in the or I'm sorry.
Okay, no, it's fine. So the time is now five thirty one and I'd like to call uh the policy, the ad hoc uh policies committee to order. Has everyone had a chance to review the agenda?
Yes.
Uh is there much to adopt the agenda?
I moved the adopt agenda, agenda as printed.
Okay, one second, uh is there only two members here?
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay, so first uh discussion items uh to discuss, uh item three point one.
Mm-hmm.
Board directors incidental travel expenses. Like to provide time for discussion.
Yeah, this came up in our open session and I thought that we should visit this during, did you bring two copies Cecil?
I brought just copies for uh.
You brought three?
No, I like had time to make one copy of everything else, but I'll gladly pass around.
Okay, well, I pretty much.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I wanted to scratch it up in case, well, I'll go ahead and you already have a highlighted.
Yeah.
You got highlighted, 'cause I grabbed it wrong for you. Okay. Well, I know that the attorneys are here, are coming. Uh at some point, I think there's an accident on the highway.
Sure.
Um and what I'm interested in learning and what I, what I know to be true, I mean, how many districts have this clause in here that board members that attended conferences during their last year, if they're not reelected, should uh pay back the expenses?
Um from what I, from what I've gathered, uh I think uh when it comes to the metro area, only one other um district has the exact wording per se as uh as this, um it is not, the MSBA does not provide, um there are no statutes that are linked to it.
Mm-hmm.
And um the NBA, then upon consulting the MSBA, they stated that we need to um this uh policy, this aspect of the policy is very generalized and we need to kind of have discussion on what exactly we would want out of this part of this policy, or if it necessarily needs to be there, so.
Yeah, 'cause based on the research that I've done, um I couldn't find uh either to me locally or even nationally that had anything that spoke to that that referencing, I thought about, for example, when we have lost, how many we've had when board members stepped down and then we have to bring on a new board member in the middle of, it's been two.
How many appointments, how many had?
Well, three, it's been three appointments. Um and it's necessary, uh 'cause you don't know if you're gonna have appointments.
Hmm.
That we stay somewhat flexible, for example, I know that we very near future, we have a board member who is serving just uh out one year and they need to go to train anyway, but what if they don't run again? So I just think it's, it is too broad. Um and I, I guess that's what a policy reads, I just think we need to scratch it, revise it, and be interested to hear what the attorney said about that. What are your thoughts?
Um in my opinion, like, I can understand having this in place, like if this was put in place, especially as last year, yeah, with the issues that we've had regarding our uh financial stability and ensuring that we kind of penny pinch whatever we can to make sure that we don't um we don't uh cost uh anything at the district's expense, but like you stated.
Hey.
Um I don't really see that this policy um is uh discussion, uh is, have an agenda please. Um that I don't see um kind of the reasoning for it, it other than, other than saving district dollars.
Yeah, um that's where we're at on that, uh Mrs. Johnson, Attorney Johnson. Uh how many school districts locally have that clause and we know it's not a state statute? Um and with us stabilizing our fund balance?
I looked at North Kansas City Center, Grandview, Lee Summit. Um and Kansas City Public didn't have, 'cause I couldn't find it quickly, um on that portion, but none of the other districts, none of those other districts have that.
You know, I think and be honest with you Cecil, um and members of the district, the things that we learn at those conferences, going to minimum dollar amount that we spend.
Yeah.
The returning those investment, that investment, I think with multiple people attending, you can't really put a dollar to it. I mean, because that's a, some intellectual capital that we, we bring back.
Yeah.
Um I personally found it to be very beneficial um to participate in those things, I know, I think as a, as a governing body, being physically responsible is our duty, and since the district has started to stabilize that, I mean, we're, you know, I'm, I'm, we're, we're doing our work stabilizing. You know, both you and I both serve on the fi- uh finance committee, I think we're committed to not just having fifteen percent fund bounds at the nineteen twenty, or at the nineteen twenty, twenty twenty one, but to continue to improve, I think, as long as we're working in the right direction, I mean, I, it may just, if no one has it.
I mean, for what I see, um I think the, the purpose kind of in, not to, not to play, I guess, yeah, to play devil's advocate, the purpose of it was to ensure that the intellectual, it's not so much the financial responsibility or to be physically responsible, but to ensure that the intellectual uh properties that come back or those that come, that go are able to have enough time to give the information that was received back to other board members, um 'cause if, if, if someone was to go, um if someone was to go to a, the national national convention or any convention really, uh their responsibility, uh the responsibility of them going is to come back and bring information for the board to review and uh to present to the board as far as what was presented there, what was, what was brought on and what would be suggested implementation or recommendation for what we're trying to do. Um I still feel, I feel like that's still possible without this uh, this um portion of this policy, I do feel like if we were to amend the policy and get rid of this, it would not necessarily ensure that uh we don't, I mean, as far as the district dollars are being used appropriately, if we're sending people to receive education. The purpose of this, I think, and I'm thinking speculating because I believe it was adopted in two thousand fourteen, was that um to ensure that we get that information back, when we know that right now we are able to get that information back, I, I don't see um a purpose for it.
Yeah, and so speaking from experience here, I think believe, Dr. Cargill, I sent you notes at a conference.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, fresh notes, you know, and I think that uh you wouldn't know that, or new board members wouldn't know that, that that information's being shared unless you ask the question.
Right.
To have that um experience with your fellow board members. Um I can attest to this board, it's been a very active board, and I think we should really should just scratch it, but as long as board members are exchanging information, Mrs. Graves brings back, I read books she wants to read all the time, let's make that book.
Uh the essential schoolwork.
Yeah, you know, she's very adamant about that, board members, you know, Clifford's adamant about some of the things he was learning about the, the new schools uh from conferences that um that we've attended, and so I think that all in all, if I had to be, you know, critique board members bringing back good information, that's just what they do, I mean, I mean, I've been there, done that, seen that, discussed that. So I think we should scratch it.
Okay, so um then, 'cause um this discussion actually extends out not just to the incidental travel expenses, but we also have other, other parts of this discussion regarding um.
Perimeter, yeah, you know, that's tricky.
So, um but, so, but I, I'd like to give pause right now that if um you like to, if, is there a motion that you would like to make into sure, to ensure that we uh, that the board has a chance to bring this to the board, that this committee discusses?
Yeah, and that we've uh reviewed uh surrounding districts and no one has that, and it's not a state statute, we can just provide the, the board that, that update.
Okay, so then.
As a best practice.
So then, you wanna make a motion?
I move that we scratch that section out. Uh and omit it due to the research that we've done uh beforehand, that members around in districts have that and there is a state statute.
Okay.
Attached to it.
Okay, so um I guess I don't want to personally second, uh so us, uh well, I will, I will second it so that we can bring it, bring it forward to the rest of the committee, uh the rest of the board to discuss um uh and uh with the recommendations of removing this from the travel expenses, that this paragraph is removed from the travel expenses, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so it's only us here, we second it, so um moving on to the next topic regarding this uh particular discussion item, um travel expenses regarding um credit card usage.
Well, you know, my thought on that is how, how long ago did the district not have a procurement card, like board members or chairs or board members? If it, can you, did, do you know that before now?
I said it was in that email that I forwarded the board from Shelby to the attorney.
Yeah, what year was that, and I know that, I mean, if, if there was any type of misuse at that time, I don't wanna, I don't think we should hold this board accountable, but I think if anything, we should explore what does a procurement card look like?
Um.
And the procurement card is not like a credit card, you set the limit based on what you anticipate your expenses will be and, you know, it's very little wiggle room on that. And our remaining funds typically go back to the, the budget.
So um section of the travel, section of purchasing, uh which is policy DJF dash one. Um it's not that one, sorry, uh talks about credit and purchasing cards. Um it refers to unless otherwise authorized by the board, only superintendent and the purchasing officer will have access to the district credit card and uh the board will set amounts that may be charged to those cards, so kind of talk about what you're talking about now. Um the board will uh will approve which uh employment positions will be issued the card, but uh it was this part. Um the board may authorize the issuing, the issuance of purchases cards to board members in the same manner that they're issued to employees, board members who choose to use a district um purchasing card, subject to the same policies and procedures as dis- district employees. Uh the superintendent is directly to, is directed to notify the board president if any board member fails to follow district policies or procedures regarding purchasing card usage and the board member's usage may be temporarily suspended based uh by the board president until the issue is presented to the board. If the board member in question is the president, or if the president is not available, the vice president will act as pres- as president in that matter. Um any employee, any employee or district member using a district card shall sign the card usage um agreement and will receive training on app- on applicable procedures for card use. Um district employees and board members issued a card must provide documentation, I'm gonna miss that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I've read that.
Yeah, um but, so that's what it pertains to that, but jumping right back to the uh travel expenses uh in payment method of travel expenses, it talks about, number two is listed as reimbursement, board members and employees should pay for travel costs and seek reimbursement from the district in situations where a direct payment by the district are, is not prop- possible or practical, such as mile, mileage reimbursements or payment for parking fees. Under no circumstances will a board member or employee be reimbursed above the amount authorized for the, uh by the IRS as reimbursable non-income for an employee.
Right, now, what that says is that board members can't elect to have some type of purchase card, and if they do accept the purchase card, then they have to go through the right training. But normally those procurement cards say that probably what, twenty-five or fifty dollar minimum on them, unless you request a increase to the card which goes through the purchasing office. And typically, usually how that's done is that you, you tally up your budget for your meals, you tally up what the hotel hold is gonna be, it's gonna be on the card, all of that goes on the card, and maybe a fifteen percent, you know, wiggle room. Any funds that's not used come back to the district, if there's any misuse of a card, I mean, I don't see really what the big deal of not having a purchase card, 'cause you only gonna have like twenty-five bucks on it just to keep the card active. What do you think, uh what, what does? You can't use it.
I think that's.
It's reasonable.
Um I don't, I don't, there's nothing in the policy that prevents you from doing that. Um the policy is clear that, that board members can have access to purchasing cards, just like employees can have access to purchasing cards, um.
If they elect to.
Cool, well, yes, and I'm just trying to see whether or not it requires or approval, I believe it does. Uh-huh. Um so it require board approval, or would have to vote and approve to um allow a particular board member to have access to a purchase card, um.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what.
Yeah, and so the only problem that I see with that, just like, like if I'm attending the conference and you say the president has a card and then there's someone else attending like a MSBA conference. You can't be in the same place with the same card, because that's the same issue that we got going, different, you can't be in different places with the same card if the president has it.
Right.
Or if the VP has it.
Right.
It's still the same situation.
Same, I tell, right.
Yeah, and um I think that it is unreasonable, now I think, when you think about it, for board members to do all this free work that they elected to do and have to also put up a lot of their money to get professional development and then to get reimbursed, because one, you don't know what may pop up in people's lives.
Yeah.
Um and I think it's important to have a, a bit of human touch, especially when you have to be away from your family, when your money's on hold, how long do, like, 'cause I'm, my receipts is paid, you already know, and you know, the people's money is on hold, you just don't know what people's, they have a commitment to fulfill their obligations. I can't speak, you know, I only can speak for myself, but I think it's something like, for example, if you were to go to someplace like Florida, the hotel hold is three hundred dollars, that's, that's a lot. Regardless of you chose to go or not, that's a lot to ask for people who have families. That's just a lot, but maybe there's a workaround, temporary, I don't even know how many people want a purchase card. I, maybe we should start there. Maybe we should, I think maybe our next step is to at some point ask who wants a per- a, a card, this may be a moot point.
I mean, I, I agree with you, it may be a moot point, because I think that based on whoever has the card, it, that may determine a board member's um vote, 'cause obviously, I, I mean, certain, certain members, um regardless of background or otherwise, um may have, may have a s- a particular preference of who they would rather have hold, hold credit card, um hold credit cards. But the, the, the issue in which, um why this, why this is, why I feel like this is concerning to me is basically because within this last year, actually as of July twenty second, two thousand nineteen, the former Ray, uh the Raytown School Board President, who has a doctor in business, was uh, is facing federal charges for stealing and misuse, mis- misuse of the district card. Now, upon that, I reviewed the, I kind of had asked, one, uh what i- if we do have a district credit card, what is it usually used for? Or what is the standard practice for um employees of the district who also have families? And I believe they are required to also reimburse, am I correct, Dr. Cargill?
Can you repeat that?
Yes, ma'am, um that district employees uh have to, are not given the, the, when they're traveling and with travel expenses, they're required to reimburse, they do not have.
Yes.
Okay, so, I mean, and like the, my concern more, when it comes to this, it's more in the sense of follow, keeping that line, because we, it does state in the travel policy like what unauthorized expenses are, but you'll notice that even some of those um non-authorized expenses varies with uh, varies with definition. For instance, snacks in additional to regular meals. Um, you know, fines, fines for parking or, or traffic violations or uh expenses incurred by non-employees traveling with staff members, like, so like.
Yeah, that, I think some of the, I think it's just, I think that I, I would say, I don't care what that, was that Raytown or whoever that's.
Uh, yes.
Yeah, that stuff, you know, I don't really like bringing any, uh other people's households and not our household. Uh and I always say that because if we're gonna do a purchase card, the limit that's on there is a temporary limit, it's not an ongoing limit. If, if a board member elects, the board chooses to, uh I, like I said, I think our next step is to see who wants a purchase card.
Oh, I agree.
And then secondly, if you're gonna take a trip, you have to submit a budget. Which is reasonable, and then any unused expenses are reimbursed immediately and the card is taken, you know, once the receipts are reconciled within those hours, those, those cards go back to their, their balance. I mean, you know, I think that we should just see who wants a card.
I agree.
And then if this warrants the type of attention uh that we're giving to this policy, then we, we take the next, next step, 'cause I don't even know who wants a card.
Because I don't, I don't think that, I don't think this discussion regarding this policy is r- really about, this aspect of this policy is regarding um amending the policy, because I feel like the policy itself is pretty concrete on the availability, uh the, the actions in which we we're able to take regarding who gets the card, who um, and um making sure that we vote on it as a committee as a whole. But to speak to your point, uh the reason why I referenced, you know, Raytown School Boards, 'cause when it came to the other aspect of the policy that we uh agreed on, we referenced all ten other surrounding districts.
And that was the negative stuff, though.
But see, now, wait a minute, but, but uh, in a, in an act to be transparent, it is important for us to look at what other people have done around us, yeah, I mean, and it kind of goes both ways, it can't be just, you know, 'cause I can, 'cause I can see how um the previous, previously discussed thing, how it, it doesn't necessarily fall under the pretenses of what we need to do, especially when no one else has it, we have nothing to reference off of. My only reference to this is that, one, it's recent, two, it's local and, and relatively close. I want to make sure that we're being extra careful with how we do things, especially if we decide to change anything up right now.
Yeah, I think it warrants a good, a good kind of a, good conversation, I, I just think the procurement card process is pretty straightforward. No one's gonna have a credit limit of five hundred dollars ongoing, it's only trip by trip. And, and once you return from the trip, you don't have that money on that card.
Right. Just a couple things that I would note, that um there is a distinction made between a district credit card and a purchasing.
Yeah.
Um card, and so is the, um and I saw an email regarding um how purchase cards are um used within the district, but I don't think that I saw, from the auditor, I don't think that I saw anything that clarified um whether or not a purchasing card um is, operates, 'cause I think they can operate multiple ways, they can operate like, more like a credit card or operate more like a, a.
Debit.
A debit card essentially, um do, do we know how the purchasing card?
This, this response just said it depends on your, um the bank that you work with to determine how that would work. But to answer your question in terms of dates, the auditor said it was first addressed in two thousand twelve and then the state auditor addressed it in the district in two thousand fourteen.
Mm-hmm.
In terms of the use of credit cards to board members.
Was it a purchase card or a credit card?
It, it was credit, the initial question was credit card.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, I, I'm not in favor at this point of a credit card, because I think a purchase card, if a board member, if the board decides to move in a direction, is more than suitable, I don't, you know, even as a board chair, I don't, there's normally food at events that you attend, you're traveling in co- close proximity, you know, you're not getting gas mileage in close proximity. So I think that, like I said, the next step is just to simply pull the board out there, and just see what the board wants to do, I mean.
So um, I mean, that, that motion would have to be more specified as far as um uh credit cards to purchasing cards limits, and also the choice of the person in which procure, uh which takes the card as well. So, I don't know if I even worth that, but.
Yeah, we probably need to work through that, 'cause a lot of work in there, or is a lot already there?
I mean, your policy says that only the superintendent and the purchasing officer are gonna have access to the district credit card. So it's already spelled out for you that anybody else, other employees or board members can have a purchasing card.
Purchase card.
Um, so I think that, that whether or not, my thought is whether or not there needs to be an amendment to this policy at all depends upon whether or not, what information we find out about how the purchasing card works with our bank.
Yeah.
Um, you know, if there's something peculiar about how our bank works for purchasing cards that, that rises, provides concern, then I would think you would come back and then address that. But if it operates like a, like, like you um described, President Briggs, uh then I wouldn't think there would be, um I don't see anything in this policy that would need to be changed.
I agree.
Okay.
Okay, so then what we'll, what we'll do is we'll, we'll just say that to uh look at um.
I'm emailing uh Mrs. Wilson out of cons- to contact her. I'm emailing, uh Miss Wilson out to con- to contact our bank to find out. If the bank issues purchasing cards and what are the criteria used for utilization of them and then she can bring, hopefully she'll have it. To bring back and share it in our finance.
Yeah, we can bring it back towards finance and we can take it, we can.
So then, so then, um.
That's if she has a response from the bank in it, in time they know.
Yeah, and you're asking about, um limits, whether or not, how limits are set on it, okay.
So, would there be a motion to add this to the agenda for?
Yeah, I'm willing to be added to the, if the information comes back in time, we have enough time to add it to the finance agenda to. Um take action on, discuss.
All right, second. Sorry, writing, um, let's see, uh next, uh. Is you feel comfortable with this policy feeling like we can shoot, we can move on?
Yep.
Okay, uh moving on to item three point two, board district school visits, um, a lot of time for discussion.
Yeah, I thought this was sent to the board and this, this was sent to this AHA committee to.
To address, uh, so the, so then, I'll, I'll speak on it, uh so. This was brought to the, brought to this meeting for discussion based on the fact that. Um, one, uh if anyone feels like this, one, uh these, this policy should be amended. And the policy in which I'm referring to is KK and KK dash R one. Um, the, it kinda states, uh KK R one in particular, which was adopted. For, uh, January eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, um states specifically more towards board members and. Um what is, upon looking at the minutes, was decided on, for the majority, over two thirds of the board had decided on this, uh. I think the vote was like five to one, but it was based on what, uh, our protocol would be when going to schools, when. Um, when going to schools, how we follow that protocol and the policy is pretty stuck on. Uh making sure that board members, um have a mutual, work with building leaders for a mutual time. To ensure that, uh, it doesn't obstruct any class discuss, uh, doesn't disrupt any class instruction. Or, uh, any of the processes or pres- uh presence of, um classroom activities. Um, I think that's, yeah, but, um. But, but, uh, this is, the, I, I believe that certain board members. Uh wanted to discuss, uh possibly amending this policy and this is provided, uh, space for that, for that discussion. Or that argument, or that debate to be made.
Um, which part of the policy?
So, you have, or you got quite a bit, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass it to you. And then, uh, also pass you the original, um, policy which is attached to.
Yeah, I think the, uh, just a kinda. I think that the surround, we, we spent a lot of time on board visitation policy.
Right.
Um, I think we're the only district that. I think Kansas Missouri is the only district that has to be, that, you know, odds are request of. Um, odds are request, um, let the superintendent know within twenty four hours that they are considering business, but that's the only district. Um. Before this policy, I hate to even continue to talk about this KK K policy. KK, KK. KK, KK R one policy because the policy, um, was really, how can I say this? There really wasn't a problem with board members visiting this school district. Until one of our colleagues was visiting this school district, uh doing this, doing their job. I, I, I would hate to, cause you need board members to, to be visible. You could, you have something to say about this?
Well, before we started with this new policy, it was, uh, a policy that was implemented by the superintendent, which never went through the board in the first place. Uh, that was the first thing, uh, we had a lot of stuff going on with the, uh, this was dealing the time. Construction. Uh, we were getting told at the meetings, everything was right, we was gonna be ready to open school, wooze woozy. And then finally, I had introduced it to Mrs. Briggs, a lot of the stuff that was being taught, told to us was not true. Uh, so.
And I think without going into too much detail, um.
It was just very good toward me.
I think professionally, I never was really in favor of board members. I, I, I think that we have to govern each other, but we also need to govern our own selves. It's, you know, I never know what my schedule's gonna be, but because I'm a board chair, I need to show up when I can. And sometimes it may not be feasible for me, time to time to get twenty four hour, hour notice. Um, but then I miss out on doing my job, I could miss out potentially on doing my job, I don't, I don't think it's that rigid. Um, it shouldn't be that rigid, um, I don't think it's that rigid, but. I just, um, who, who else I think we looked at that?
So, I pulled the policies again for, um, and I just randomly picked some schools, North Kansas City, um Center. Uh, Grandview, Lee Summit, and then Kansas City Public. Um, and all of the, all of the districts except for Kansas City Public Schools. Um, uses the MSBA standard, um, policies. All of them have policy KK adopted, um, which essentially. Gives board members the same, um, visitation rights as parents and anyone else, the process is, um, the same. And most of these districts, their policies are the exact same language, um. And, and Hickman is the same, um, for policy KK. So there, um, if you look at, uh, district property, um, that, that section of policy KK. The language reads almost identical to that of North Kansas City, Center, Grandview. Uh, it's slightly different for Lee Summit, but not, um, the, the tone of the, um, language is the same. Um, and none of them have adopted a policy KK R one. Um, I didn't look on the opposite side of the state and I looked at Liberty as well and Liberty didn't have that. But those were the only districts that I looked at in this area, um, KK R one is specific to us. Uh huh, um, Kansas City Public Schools has one that is similar to ours. Um, not quite as rigid, for lack of a better word, um, but it is similar. It requires board members to inform the superintendent of any visitor twenty four hours in advance of the visit, whenever possible. Unless the board member is attending a function to which he or she has been invited. Board members must check in at the principal's office following district guidelines and must sign, must have their identification badge visible. All visits are to be escorted or directed by the principal. Uh, board members will not interrupt scheduled learning periods or interfere with the learning process. Board members will not assume supervisory role with staff or students. Board members will not assume a, a, a preparatory role with staff or students unless specifically requested by the principal. This operating procedure does not pertain to visits as a parent, as a spectator to school events or others, events open to the general public. Um, so that has a little bit more specificity, um, than the other districts do. But not as much, in my opinion, as the, as our policy.
Yeah, you know, I'm gonna be honest with you, board members shouldn't be playing supervisor. I don't know, I mean. Or whatever, all those little lines, I'm tired of spending, I'm be honest with you, this, this, this board visitation policy. I'm so far over trying to look at this and revise this, it's totally, I wish we were sitting here working on something else. But this keeps coming up for some reason. I mean, we are spending way too much time making this way too complicated, we go visit our schools, we get in, we get out. If bo- I'm confident that if board members would have done their job, and I hate to say this on camera. And visit those sites. Cause we're the governing body, then we probably would have a little bit more money in our fund balance. So it, it puts, it puts me in a pretty sticky situation here because I've experienced some things that I'm not gonna go all the way in depth about. But just, uh disrupting the learning environment, I don't know any board member that has went into a classroom. That disrupted the learning environment, I don't know where those words, who wrote that.
It doesn't specifically say disrupting the.
The learning environment.
The learning environment, it says more to the lines of, can I see that?
Yeah, and I, and I know that when I go to the school, I don't, I can, I, I can, I can walk with a janitor, I can walk with, with. With the cafeteria person, because as a, as a, as a board member, you're just being visible. Walking, supporting the district.
Well, I, I think another two, two thing that was also brought up was another stipulation that was brought up was, uh, we needed checks. Background checks, and so now that was another thing, so we have done that. I mean, because they said, well, you haven't done a background check, you need to go get your checks made, we done all that. But before you even get on the board, they're gonna do that anyway, you would've known that if somebody was doing something wrong in the first place.
Well, I, I just think that, what y'all wanna do with this policy, I think we spent way too much time on this discipline policy, I mean, on this board visitation policy. I would like, for, you know, I wanna hear what y'all wanna do with this.
So, um, with this, I understand the reason why, like, at the time, the reason why the policy was put in place. But I also understand, um, the reason why the policy exists today and I'll, and I'll, and I'll speak toward, towards what I mean. The only way I can do is kinda give a, give a reference, but what we, what we consider the second amendment, when it was enacted, is not the same as we see it now. To give more reference to that, the right to bear arms is not exactly what we would have, uh, that. As we go towards looking at how to, as the government goes towards looking at that, we were trying to add amendments to that. In order to make sure that that actually, um, keeps Americans safe. This policy and the policy I'm referring to more along the KK R one. Um, I understand that this policy is writ, one, is, was enacted, what, a year, a year and, um, nine months ago. From what, from my understanding is, is that since the inception of this policy, it has not been followed with fidelity, so. The ability for it to, um, affect, to, um. The governing body's ability to essentially do its job is, is ineffective if the policy has not been followed with fidelity. That being said, looking at the policy itself and what it pertains to, like, for instance, like if you're currently a, uh, parent, then. Then it, you refer back to KK, now. It stated, it states in KK that the principal or designee of the school, of each school building will post appropriate signs to direct visitors to designated doors. Uh nearest, nearest the office, the building office, now. Based on KK alone, if we were to just have this policy and were to, um.
No, I, I, I know.
Um, if, if, if we were just to adhere to, uh, board members being able to come in just as it's done in every other thing, then. We would sign in through the principal's office, we would then have a designated place in which we expect to go, what we're there to see. We wouldn't be able to necessarily tour the school. Whereas this, the policy KK R one allows you to be able to come with the aspect of. Of being able to see, walk around, visit, see the school. And the only reason why I would be against, um, amending or getting away, getting rid of this policy is, is for my availability to see the school as a whole. Whereas I, if I adhere to the policy as KK is provided, KK provides that just like with parents or guardians and patrons of the district. You have to state a specific area in which you plan to go, so you go and walk in, you go to the principal's office, you get a badge, and you tell the principal where you wanna go. But you give a specific area to where you wanna go, you're not asking to see the whole school, you're asking to see this specific area.
Yeah, you know, the thing about it is that. I really, to be honestly, honest with you, appreciate when any board member visits the school.
Absolutely.
And, you know. If they choose to walk fifteen extra steps down another corridor, I don't think that it should be that rigid, you're going to, I'm gonna go to the cafeteria. You know, so I just honestly think, again, these are, are these laws or policies?
These are policies.
Okay, so I think that everything, this is another opportunity where we can govern each other. I, I mean, what, I mean, we spent a lot of time on these policies, I mean, it'd be different, uh, seeing Mr. Watchery. And Mr. Reagan, Carlin, Doctor Cargill, if we keep looking at this policy, it's driving me loco.
Uh, I don't, I honestly think that we don't have to look at the policy, I think we should just adhere to it.
But here's the word I wanna object to, uh, President Briggs, this policy was just really put in place for me and it's not fair to me. To have it be restricted, uh, now, we have some, uh, principals who do not mind us coming to their school. I probably, maybe out of all seven of you guys, no offense to you guys, only one probably makes it around to the whole school.
You do make it to all the schools, Mr. Reagan.
You know, I'm just saying, so, it's just kinda to me, I've been doing this before I got on the board. And now all of a sudden, you know, one, one fine year, we, you know, I am tired of it, I am, I am sick and tired of it. We spend money on it just to do more, which we could've saved, uh.
How, how, how did we spend money?
Background checks, that's what they bought you, remember I said, they said we needed background checks. And that's just a waste of money and waste of time.
Well, Mr. Reagan, maybe you're too active of a board member.
Well, I was asking, I'm sorry.
But, here's the thing.
I had to get that one off.
So, so, I, and I understand, like, and this is why I referenced the whole second amendment, uh, jargon to this. It's because, yes, I, I, I would agree that, upon looking even at the minutes and looking at the minutes bef- before the initial meeting of this vote. Um, that a lot of discussion was around school visits and they often pertain to, to you. But I, I, I'll, I'll make two notes, note number one is that you second and voted for this policy, both of you.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're bringing that.
So. But also that this policy has not been followed with fidelity by board members, agreed?
No, I, I can't agree with that, I gotta know.
Okay.
I mean, can talk about it, I mean, I don't know with every board member, where every board member's at.
So.
At any given, at every time that they're visiting, that's not in the policy to contact the chair when a board member.
Oh, no, 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 that's not what I'm saying, what I'm saying is that, um, it's more or less known. It's not, it's not a, more of a speculation, it's more of a rhetorical question when asking that question of whether or not anyone has adhered to this policy. The trouble with this is that now it, it, this, the focus shifts from it being about board members and that, and it shifts towards. Our trust with, our trust when it comes to the culture and climate of our schools. Now, I understand that principals will be okay with, uh, board members coming into schools. But you also have to as- assume that, and I'm, uh, I'll give you a hypothetical stance in which someone goes into a school. A board member goes into the school with the building leaders as well as teachers knowing that this policy exists and then. Is being asked if they are following policies from the governing body, so what that does is that creates mistrust. And in order for us to continue to ask for trust, and, and you know what, I would even say so much is that if we wanted to address this in the, in the following year. That after we know that this policy has been followed, then so be it. But even so much as if we do not have this policy. Then so be it. But even so much as if we do not have this policy, K K R one. And we just rely on the policy regarding uh district property, uh when it comes to visitation. Then we would then be limiting ourselves to that. And by doing so, although this is not law, is our policies are entangled with state statute.
Yeah, I just think that, you know, I just, I hate to say this.
No, it's not fair, I'm.
Yeah, I don't think, what what happened, it's it's not, you know, and I'm speaking from, I'm speaking from. It's not fair to the other board members, I I don't think. I think when the incident was, the incidents where that was triggered. Dr. Cargill was in her seat, I think that it was the best decision at that time because. You didn't know who you were working with. Okay, you just you just simply didn't know who you was working with. Um, so it was done out of.
Spot.
I was, I, that's not my word.
Well, it's my word.
My word is it was done out of wanting to make sure everyone felt comfortable and safe. And so that's why it was, um, you know, I would have to say on my part, it was done, he said spot, I was thinking more like safe. And and within the control, as much as you control that piece. Um, but, hey.
Well, just just take.
If, I mean, I, but I can wait after you, I just wanna.
It's just real quick, just talking to past board members from all the way down. Never had a problem with none of this. They said they went into the schools.
They still going to school.
And, yeah, it was something that was on here that's gone now, they're still going to the schools, no problems. Never had a problem, never had a problem with coming to talk to anybody, never had a problem with doing anything, and they still doing it. And I can bring you five, six of them if you need, but I'm just saying the old past, they never had a problem.
So then they never had a problem?
Going into school, walking around, they didn't call nobody. Nine times, nine percent of the time, they was talking to people anyway.
But then, but if 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 our role is not to provide oversight in this role of visiting schools, cause then. Or supervision was the word that was used, then our baili- what is the problem with notifying? If if anything, if anything that it would, it would strengthen the relationship and the trust with with the administrative office as well as. Trickling down for.
Putting on heads.
Okay, now what do you mean by that?
Putting on heads, I can make it look like it's well done. If I know you come to my house, you know, for enough time, I'm gonna use that analogy there for you.
Okay.
I'm gonna clean up, if I haven't cleaned up.
So then I'm.
So if I'm, if I'm coming to see the truth. And you're telling me, keep in mind, you, oh, I'm telling you I'm a clean person all the time. I'm telling you that everything is doing what it's supposed to be doing. And then you come, this one day, without telling me, then you see for yourself, your eyes is. You you see a different perception. It's not that, oh, you coming to chastise somebody. That's not your role, you're just, just getting the truthful message. And that's with anybody, even with you.
Right.
With the hypothetical, we all got that, you know, we all got where, hey, I want your call, give me a little time, I might be doing something. I don't want you to be, you know, coming up on me. We all go through that. So I mean, that's all that was, it's called putting on heads, that's what I call staging.
Okay, so with that being said, with putting on who, if if you are dropping out the school unannounced. Because you're, the potential of them putting on the heads of something, you mean, not be able to see. That's, that's oversight, that's supervision, that's, that's outside of our role.
I'm not coming to see, I just wanna hear the truth, just like with the money.
Oh, absolutely.
I'm not saying with the money, with the, and I don't let her, cause Dr. Cargill was ready, you know.
But yeah.
With the money issue, like she stayed at President Bridge State, it would have been real nice if we would. Went out and did our due diligence, because that was a big project. We would have had more money probably to see. We could have stopped a lot of things from happening, even though I stated it in small tongue.
I understand that we, we as a governing body have to watch what we do. But in this, or or watch what, how we can best provide governance to our district. But in doing so, we also have to ensure that, just like we learned in our M S B A training. That it is on her role to hold them accountable. Now, the things that we do see when it comes to facilities. Which, which is the reason why you said that originally finding something, finding out that something that was said was untrue. I I under- I understand you stumbling upon that, but you would have stumbled upon that in the same aspect of if you would have gave twenty four hour announcement.
No.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we on task.
We we are, we are, I mean, that that aspect is that we discuss this in this entirety, now we, that's why this. Committee, uh was this committee supposed to do? So, I believe you did have a comment.
My initial comment was just centered around, I know there's been discussion this evening around other districts not having a policy like our board policy. In place. And in my conversations with other superintendents in some of the same districts in which that have been listed out. That don't have a policy, there is a level of communication between the board and the superintendent. Where they don't even need the requirement to have a policy in place, because there's a level of respect for the work to where. Any board member does make contact with the superintendent, then let them know when they're visiting a building, and so, um. Is it needed? No, but is there some level of mutual respect? That the board and the superintendent has for one another, just in terms of sharing information and keeping each other informed, which is why I sent a weekly update. With to the board, giving as much information as I can. And so that's what 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 that stands for. So those districts who don't require or don't need a a policy in place, because they have this standing, understanding. As to what practices will be followed, that's great, they don't need a policy, but we don't have. A a an understood process in place, which is why we needed a policy um put in place. And the whole piece around the um, the background checks, that was something that was generated. Through a conversation with the board, not a recommendation from district staff to even implement a um. To have a background. And and process. And so as I listen to direct, uh Vice President Reagan speak about. Not wanting to provide notification to building leaders to be, basically, it's almost like, I just wanna see if if you're doing it right. So comments like that are based on a lack of trust. And so in the district. My goal as superintendent is around creating this climate that's that's centered around respect for one another. Whenever I visit a building, building principals know, we schedule walkers, this is not about me trying to catch them doing something different from what they're communicating. The results will be in in information that's shared through conversations with staff or. It always comes out, it's it's not about catching somebody doing something wrong. And so comments like this. On a recorded video that any staff member can follow, it. It potentially can cause detriment to a culture that I'm trying to create within a district built around respect. And I don't believe any of my building leaders hired to service building principals are are doing something inappropriate. No matter what day, whether I schedule a visit or not schedule a visit, it's been the same. They're there to serve children. And it is really important that that we think about the message that that con- conveys to building leaders that. Board members are saying they don't wanna schedule a visit because they wanna see if what they're saying publicly is really in fact the truth.
Yeah, I don't think it's board members, I I don't wanna generalize.
Well, I'm trying not to specify names, cause that's inappropriate based on our training that we receive.
And I'm and I'm thinking, you know, it it's very, like I said, all this stuff has to have a human touch to it and. And quite frankly. I'm I'm ready to move on.
So then, the the, I mean, the discussion regarding this has been to. Why, if if this policy should be amended or not. Um, and I think that who concluded is that if there is, if the if A. Board members are not there to provide oversight or uh or um supervision. And are there to observe and see, which is actually in the policy, that board members are supposed to just uh, are there to observe to see what is going on. It's not so much as catching them. And two, that we have this policy in place where regardless of what happens. As we are streamlined, but uh the aspect that. Everyone has access to the availability, which is the reason why I brought this up in the first place, is because it's not. If if one person had came to me and told me uh that this was, this was something that was concerning to them. Then I would address it with that one person. But the fact that it has been multiple, multiple people from different levels and. Discussion is not whether or not um what we should or should not do, it has, it has to deal with trust.
Yeah, I think it was, that's just really what it is, and I think that's uh gonna be ongoing.
Absolutely.
Throughout the the leadership development from board members to board members, board members to those who attend. I just think that's gonna be an ongoing thing.
So um at this time, that's being said, um, is there any action that you wish to take? Is there any action that anybody wishes to take with this uh with this item?
Oh, I wish to take uh, if we amend, I think we should bring it to.
Is there a motion, uh a motion for remediation?
I'm just saying, that's just.
Of being one part of it.
Yeah, but that's what I'm trying, I I I just would think that um. What I do is, and I, before I even started back to calling again, cause I was calling, but I feel like I go so much. I'm calling, I'm probably, I wouldn't go it. Make a long story short, I do sign in. I think that's good enough for a board member to sign in and at least say, hey, I'm in in your building. I think that's a good enough note for, if I said, I'm here, but as far as me calling. I can't do that, I'm, and and all that, and limiting myself.
Well, you can't say that though, Mr. Ray, you're not reading.
No, I'm just saying, I just couldn't see. No, he was asking, I'm just trying to, all, I'm talking about both policies, he's asking which part to amend.
Yeah.
Yeah, but what part do you want?
I would just like, I'd rather get rid of, I would make a motion to get rid of board members uh having to call. And having to uh give a twenty four, whatever it is now.
I'm gonna provide you with it, so you can, no, I'm gonna give it to you so that I've highlighted the certain parts that you're kind of discussing. You're gonna have to be.
Okay, I'm gonna specify. I'll make a motion that we amend. Well, this is just telling us what we're doing.
That's the policy.
Okay, I I make a motion that we uh get rid of K K dash R one indefinitely, all of it indefinitely. There ain't no reason to read all that, I already know that part. That's just my. Indefinitely.
Is there a second? At this time, there is no second, so motion does not.
Well, we're gonna discuss.
I mean.
You wanna give a discussion?
Be, it had to be, it had to be second to be discussed.
We need a second to discuss it.
So, um.
So what we gonna do?
Literally, I'm about to give like thirty seconds and wait till something happens and then we we're gonna move on. Cause discussion could put, we discussed it beforehand, before we even brought it to motion, and then the motion. Did not go through based on the fact it wasn't second.
So what you gentlemen and lady would like to do?
Well, under Robert Tewes, what would happen if the policy would stay the way it is?
Yeah.
The policy would just stand.
So with that being said, with no second to the motion, the policy stands as is.
But according to Robert Tewes, uh we could bring it up at uh the person that, as he stated. We both voted for this to stay at that time. We also can bring it up. At that time, cause we was on that opposed instead.
Oh, you mean as far as like.
To the whole board.
Yeah, yes, yes, most definitely, but this is more, this is more towards a.
Right now.
Cause the president asked that we, that we bring it to the committee, yeah, you're good.
I don't know.
That we bring it to the committee so for, so they can be discussed, which I think it will discuss as much as it can be. And now, um, if if a board member does want to bring it up to, uh especially a board member who voted on this policy wants to bring it up. And uh they can motion for. What they would like to tap into this policy. Okay, so with that being said, we're gonna move on to item three point three, which is uh concerning school discipline. Now, I, this was added to the agenda based on uh discussion of school discipline uh from the last meeting. It was not my discussion.
Well, I did, Mrs. Sheen, bring it.
I did, I did, I got it on email, that's why I can call.
I I I was just looking at, there's some new policies that have been implemented over at the secondary wrestling school. Uh, and I know that they're not coordinating with the policies that we have. I think this is just in schools, in the buildings. And this is something new, cause I had to sign off for my children, and I think it would be, right now, if a student misses so many days. Uh, he's, he or she uh can lose credit, but they have a right to make it up in there, but I don't see that.
This J E D, and I I included that in the end of week notes multiple times for the board and provided the document that um. That school administration has been sharing, that is a policy, and we have the right to do that. It's done, it like, it was even discussing educational accountability. Cause Director Abram said he was very familiar with it in in Grandview. Other districts are doing it. And I put the reason why we were more, we were implementing the policy now. Based on the task force that I asked Dr. Skinner to lead in terms of attendance. We explore options like, what are other districts doing to address attendance? And it was discovered that other districts are implementing at the high school, this policy, if you miss a certain amount of days, you begin to lose credit. We began a search, we had the policy in place, I'm not really sure at what point or what year the district stopped following the policy. But we are basically implementing a policy that's already been in place, and I did provide notice to the board.
And then uh I also too, I was looking at the um policies around our neighborhood districts, ours is so vague. I think Center probably spelled out disciplines altogether, what each consequences would be.
I can speak to that as well, also discussed that the educational accountability coming in. In terms of our handbook, there is an intent, there is a student handbook task force that's going to. Explore what the districts are doing and revise our handbook to be. Uh, to be inclusive of interventions and strategies that we are using. Utilizing, not at all from our standpoint, this district administrator is trying to revise policy, but how can we make our handbook? More uh clean cut, and as discussed in education accountability, Director Abram was on board, knowing that. This is a task force that's going to be uh working on this for during the school year. With any revisions or updates to our student handbook being enacted in the twenty twenty one school year. Because parents have already seen this just handbook, so we we don't want to change mid mid year.
So when was the last time the handbook was revised?
The handbooks are updated every year based on information. However, really looking at, do we need an elementary handbook versus in a secondary? So the task force will will dig into that, and and that's that's the task. And including a response to intervention framework embedded within the handbook as well.
Cause the the one thing that I wanted to look at, uh when it came, that I was looking at when it came to the policy was just ensuring that. Uh, just, and then just the overview, I looked at uh the subsequent, the first offense and subsequent offense. Uh, policies, and I know that right now we are working on, um. The district itself is working on, or is implementing restorative practices into our um. Into our classrooms as well as into our schools. But I, the one thing I do wanna look at in the future is ensuring that there is coverage regarding either. Uh regarding restorative uh practices within um, within our district, uh. It within these first offense policies, and and the, and that the reason why I would, why I wanna bring that up in discussions is because. It asks that the majority of all, uh, well, yeah, the majority, if not all. Are asking for principal and student conference, parent guardian conference, uh detention, in-school suspension. Or one to eight hundred days out of school suspension, which are effective for mo- the majority of most, oh, yeah, the majority of most first offenses. Looking at how we can utilize uh restorative practices, um. Um, as far as that first offense, to ensure that, cause well, the one thing that I want to make sure that we're addressing is. Our um suspensions. Now, I understand that we have a lot, the idea is that we should. We are trying to move toward, within restorative practices, you talk about moving away from suspensions. And looking at how to address uh conflicts within the, within the classroom, within the school. Uh, with that being said, um. Uh, with that being said, um, it would be my recommendation that, you know, again, that. If they're gonna discuss, if if anything's gonna be discussed about school discipline regarding that, that it be moved to the uh education accountability. Uh, educational accountability on how we could implement that into our policies, or just to even look at it.
I was looking at some of these, uh, like center, and I think you, I don't know if you have time to read it. But they kinda have like a elementary one, and they do have it broken down. To whereas, you know, they have the offenses that if they do, I'm sorry. If they have offenses, it's all in there, it's not like you got it all over a hundred to a hundred eight days. It tells like maybe uh first offenses, one to two days, suspension, confiscation, and that's with the, when they using different stuff. But it's spelt out.
Is that the policy of their handbook?
No, this is their policy.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it warrants, um, I know that, well, I think I heard Doc Cardy said that the revisions are for handbook, for the handbook.
Okay, and so we just need to make sure that our policy is in line with our handbooks. I'm hearing Mr. Watery say.
It's it's not something we can, yeah, it's not something we can do this year, like I said, I don't wanna.
Well, we can, for next year.
Yeah, but I think that we will warrant, um, at some point enough research regarding what practice we wanna do. Do we wanna spell it out, do we wanna keep it broad, and we can make decision. Do we wanna sign a small group to that?
So, I'm gonna.
You said educational.
I'm I'm gonna be excessive in in what I'm, I have reviewed and annotated sixty two articles regarding. Uh, restorative practices and trauma-informed uh trauma-informed schools. And how, how to look at it in regards to what we need to do about our discipline policies to match the verbiage. On the im- implementation that we're already doing, we are already implementing restorative practices, we're already implementing uh trauma-sensitive schools. Um, the the one thing is, is to make sure that the policy reflects this so that it can continuously be done with fidelity. So, that's that, a lot of the issues in which you've discussed, especially as of late, when it comes to. School security or um attendance, um, all kind of wrap around into uh the aspect of how we address school discipline. And I just wanna make sure that our policies uh have been updated with with the things that we're already doing.
Yeah, I think that that's, that will probably are, that is a step, is to kind of look at that with a critical eye. That, you know, this school discipline thing may be something we need to look at.
Yeah.
As one agenda working session amongst.
And and that's why, that's why my recommendation is that the educational accountability committee addresses this. And before it's brought back to this committee to discuss regarding, because it needs to be looked at as far as the comparisons that needs to be made. Because there are other districts that have changed their the verbiage of their uh discipline policies. Uh, from schools in New York, San Francisco, San Diego, um. And I just wanna make sure that we are, our investments are made with that, and s- so we can, we can discuss that with it at a later date.
And effectiveness of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Effective, the the effectiveness.
So, I move that we. I think it warrants some more discussion before we move to the educational accountability committee for a little bit more clarity.
Okay.
I move that we just kind of table this for additional discussion. And maybe work with the, he said, he said I'll lay it on the table.
Don't say table, don't say table, don't say table.
Maybe we work with council on helping us revise that, and Dr. Cardy on whatever. To make sure that everything that they we implement as a district is being incorporated into the policy.
I agree.
Because, you know, we have biz, we have the total practice, um, we have the middle school, high school, early, early learning. So, it's gonna take, it has three different layers, so it's three different, uh, tier of groups of children.
Right, right. So, okay, then, what we'll do is we'll just, um, we'll add this to our next, our next meeting, um, for further discussion. And we'll just leave it there, so, um, at this time, moving on to four point O, future agenda items, um.
I move that we add school discipline to future agenda items and come back with uh some uh draft recommendations. I'm sorry, will this be, this is an item, that's a future item for this committee not to be taken to the board? Right, yeah, we, that's gonna take some, this school discipline, cause we need to make sure that we're just up to date on that period.
Okay, um, any others? Sorry, any, any other future agenda items?
Um. I think I missed the other, but I'll find out about that one now.
You have time.
Signs, did y'all do the school sign?
I think that will go with the future, this, I'll fall under.
Let's, let's do this, we'll put, um, we're gonna put the policy for, um. Can you please add to the second meeting, cause I think I know what you're talking about, building and ground security, um, to to our next meeting.
Are we establishing a policy about signs?
No, I think we're looking, I think that's what we're looking at for a discussion, cause I believe, and I'm just.
But isn't this the policy committee to discuss policies, or are we establishing a policy about signs in the building where we, you know?
I think that we're, I think what.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Am I right? This is yours, okay, um, so, um, from what I understand, uh, Mr. Reagan wanted to discuss the, um. The uh building and ground security when it comes to the uh no weapons signs that are in front of of the doors. Just to ensure that we have that sign in front of every door, or a policy that says that we have those signs in front of the doors.
That's what I was asking, are we, are we trying to write a policy?
I think, I think so, I, that's why I was like looking at him.
Yeah, we, I think we do, I mean, even this past week, when I walked on the premises of schools, um.
We got it there.
Yeah, we, yeah, we just need to make sure that our policy is visible, is visible, however we're gonna execute that. Um, I know that there's a sign here, but there's no signs at some of the other schools.
So, we just need to make sure, to ensure that there's signs, is it, is that really something that we need to discuss, or do we just need to?
Mr. Weasley has requested a quote in terms of what the stickers cost. And I forgot the other level of signs, but there are signs at every building, they may not be on the front of every door, but those signs are there.
Okay.
So, he's requested a quote to see what the cost would be.
Okay, then, I will, I'll leave, I'll take that off of here, and leave that for the full board discussion, that's.
Yeah, is there something in the policy that relates now that we have this no gun and these knife signs?
I mean.
Shouldn't be right here, it is.
Yeah, is, do we need to do, um.
Because the signs are really, really like, like the sign I saw is way away from the building.
So.
It's a cost and a quote.
Yeah, I mean, it it's, the the thing is, it becomes somewhat subjective to who can see and who cannot see the sign. How big the sign needs to be, or how loud the sign needs to be, that, that's why I was like, well, not so much as a policy issue here unless. Cause I I believe, I read that policy earlier today, that it kinda addresses uh firearms and I think it's the section that says firearms. That kinda talks about the signs, uh, but if it's already a policy, we have, it's not really a policy.
We have to have firearms and knives and weapons.
All of it, where they're visible.
Because now the sand, the signs are have more than one, no, the new signs, their old school buildings.
But see, and that's, to me, that's a slippery slope, cause then we'll have a sign that just covers the whole thing, where it has crowbar, knife, bay, mace, pepper spray. Like, I I think like, kinda like universal sign, the universal sign is usually what, I mean, the most common, yeah.
But we went to a, we went to a school district.
That was, that was excessive.
No, we went to a school district though, that had like, if you missed this, you something was wrong.
Okay.
And that's one of, and that's one of the things that when you go to different conferences and.
You see a lot.
You see how they are implementing the policies and processes. I mean, the whole, was it a lot? Yes, it was. Was the school highly functioning? Yes, it was. You know, was the kids learning? Did it, did it show any signs of prison pipeline? No, it didn't. Um, so, it's just those models, I mean, what do we wanna model this like as a district? How do we wanna look when it comes to signage, um, as it relates to these these conversations?
Well, yeah, this, and even still as we have this discussion, I still think it's something that the board will discuss as far as what kind of signs that. As Mr. Weasley is getting a quote on the signs, what kind of signs do you, are you, are you trying to see?
Yeah, I look forward to seeing what he brings back.
Yeah, so, um, we'll leave that off, and is there any other items that, any other future items that you would like added to the policy committee?
Did y'all talk about the jails, the uh the worms, the brownies, uh, and the jello's that they have taken in now?
No, that's not really our.
Is that one of the policies in there?
You're talking about substance use?
Yeah, is that one of them?
Yeah.
I mean.
I think you're talking about edibles.
Edibles.
So, so in other words.
Is that edible?
And go under.
Cause that's not really a policy issue, cause I think we have a policy in place for substance, substance use that identifies what, what we state are substances. But, I mean, we, the one thing I don't want us to do is to have our policies literally stating verbatim every single last drug that we. Cause edibles is considered a drug, um, but as long as our policy regarding substance abuse covers it. I'd rather make sure that it stays vague enough to cover any new drugs that come up. And if if it comes to the point where we, it's something that's not in our policy, then we will bring it here. But other than that, I'll, I will leave that to, I will leave that to the board as well.
Yeah, I think we have, school discipline's gonna take some time, I think most of the board would need to do that.
So, uh, without any other future, um, agenda items, I just wanna say few, uh, five point O, future meeting dates. Uh, education accountability meeting, September ninth at five P M, financial committee meeting, September tenth. Uh, at five, at five thirty, facility committee meeting, September twelfth at five thirty. Levy hearing is at September twenty fourth, uh, at six fifteen P M. Uh, regular, regular session board meeting is uh September twenty fourth at six thirty, at six thirty P M. And policy committee, uh, will meet, uh, again at Sept-, uh, October first at five thirty. Is there any, anything, any other comments before we adjourn?
One thing, you all will get a, within the next week or so, a communication, draft communication plan. Um, I don't know whether or not you, that that wants to go through this committee, or how you intend to. Um, educate yourselves on it and make some decisions about it, so.
I think it needs to probably come through here for a read, and then, yeah. And if we can add that to a future agenda.
Future agenda, thank you. Any other comments? Uh, the time is now six fifty two, and we are adjourned.
Thank you. Dr. Cardy, I think you could get back to you. Regarding the meeting. The one you wanted to say, woman, the witness. Mr. Brooks is flexible, myself.